Anyways, I really appreciate meeting all you guys.
She's gotta run out.
Yeah, I've gotta go to Davenport, so Davenport's out of my mind.
Nice to meet you.
But it was nice to meet you guys. Does anybody have any questions on the engineering or me?
No, not on the agenda yet, so if they have any questions, they're gonna have to call Bob.
Okay. I like that, tight ship. It was really nice to meet you all and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
I have a bumper sticker that says, "When in doubt, call Bob."
That's a good, that's a good idea, I gotta tell you.
Are you ready to call the order?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn, Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Do you stand to pray? Father, we just come to you tonight, we just thank you for who you are and praise your holy name. Father, I pray that you would bless this commission and help us to make the wisest decisions that we can for this city. Wisdom and discernment will be greatly appreciated. Father, we thank you for our new commissioner coming onboard tonight. Bless this meeting, bless our city. In Jesus' precious name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item Agenda number four. Both of office for Ward 1 Commissioner Jason Cox. Amy?
Come forward. They've rearranged the room, so just...
Yes, sorry, that was my fault.
Raise your right hand. You after me? Aye, Jason Cox.
Aye, Jason Cox.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly
And that I will not knowingly
Receive directly or indirectly
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing
Any money or any other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm
I further swear or affirm.
I will faithfully discharge
I will faithfully discharge
My duties as City Commissioner
My duties as City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Oh, we don't have a C. We don't have a name tag yet.
We've ordered it.
You can take your C, the one without a name tag, I guess.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Mayor, can we take about a couple-minute break to wait on Jean to come back?
Yes.
In the meantime, will you go ahead and sign that out?
Make a motion.
I don't think we need a motion.
We do need, um, just take a break.
We're, it's not live streaming for some reason.
No, it's not. You want me to swear again?
Yes. It's not my decision anyway.
Yeah, you're right.
I think you did a great job.
When in doubt, call Bob.
It didn't feel risky.
You leaving?
That's the end of that.
You wanna learn City Government stuff?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Watch your step behind you.
This is just a complicated room tonight. Thank you. There's that.
Yeah, Mark broke his tooth today. See this really bad?
That's how it goes for me. Wow, probably eating ice, that sounds awesome.
I can't see it. I mean, it's up, but it's obviously not recording.
I apologize.
I looked at those, they're both flashing, which is what they're supposed to do.
Hit them again and see what happens.
Flashing is correct.
Turn it off and turn it back on.
But we are getting audio?
Not getting anything here.
We're getting audio here.
Oh yeah, we're getting audio there.
Probably just roll on.
I shouldn't have, but...
Steve, you can wait, we'll get your call.
You ready, Jean?
Yes.
Item Agenda number five. Consideration and action on consent agenda A through M. Any commissioners have any comments they want to pull from?
I'm making a motion to exempt.
One second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Number seven. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the City Commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Number eight.
I'm sorry?
No. Absolutely. Are we good? I just didn't know if we were waiting for something.
No, we're good. Feel like I'm in trouble.
All right. Number eight. Consideration and discussion of possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Industrial Development Authority Trust. One open appointed trustee position with term ending April 30th, 2023.
We don't have any letters that I'm aware of.
So we keep judging. All right. Number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Public Library Trust. One open trustee position with term ending June 30th, 2025.
There's one letter that has been submitted. There was two letters submitted, one recanted. When they found out their relative submitted also, they didn't understand, they didn't want to have a showdown, so that's in the next agenda item. It's a letter from Linda Barta, and I believe it's in your packet.
So move to ten. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint Linda Barta to the Perkins Public Library Trust, term ending June 30th, 2025. Any comments from the staff?
She previously served on the library board and desires to be placed on the library trust, and she has resigned your position on the library board.
Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Linda Barta to the Perkins Public Library Trust, ending in June, the term ending June 30th of 2025.
My second. She will be a great addition. A great addition, very qualified. Number eleven. Consideration, dis- Oh, what? Oh, she got a call. Sorry, my bad.
Oh, that makes sense.
I gotta hurry. I've never been accused of being in a hurry.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sorry. Number eleven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the process for selection of the members of the Perkins Library Board.
This is derived from, there's been kind of a process identified that we use for all boards, and it's staff wanting clarification from the commission on whether or not we want basically the same process to go out for members of the library board as we would for PIDA or library trust or anything else, or City Commission.
How many are we looking for?
Just one.
One position?
One, I believe.
I say we stay consistent.
I think we want to maintain the same process.
Okay, the letters, Facebook.
Letters of interest with-
Flyers.
Will do.
References.
Do we need to make a motion?
Please.
I make a motion to retain the process for selection of the members of the Perkins Library Board, the same process across the city with other boards, where they will submit a letter of interest, we will advertise on social media and all other social platforms.
I'll second.
Get you getting in on it.
Yeah, there you go.
Autumn's not here, it's gonna be a slow night.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Number twelve. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding 15,000 in capital improvement sales tax funds, sales tax funds previously committed to the Rural Economic Action Plan grant application. Mr. Erbison?
When I went to a meeting at COED, the Council on Economic Development District, they informed us that the REIT monies have doubled this year. Usually it's 50,000 cap, now it's 100,000 cap, so we had a project for about $68,000 or something, which we would have needed some matching funds. Now, we're able to keep the same project and apply without matching funds. And I, last month, kind of the reason we didn't go back and think about trying to do something to get more of the grant funds up closer to 100,000 was last year we were awarded the max, and they tend to kind of alternate years with different communities. So, and they asked at the meeting, you know, if everybody applies for the max, then not everybody's gonna get it, so. So we just decided to stay with the project and take away the matching funds. That's my recommendation to you. Is that not what I said?
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any comments or further questions?
Oh, hold on. So, you're saying that-
She's getting ready.
Well, I think Ray should talk to you about this agenda.
That's what I thought. Okay, right. Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yes.
I have such a poor memory. Last month, you committed this $15,000, and Bob's saying that we really don't need to contribute 15,000, so you think, I think I just need to-
Amended?
It's not much. Just consideration and possible, discussion, possible action.
You could just make a motion that-
I don't need anything. No.
We don't need it for the grant proposals.
Maybe a motion recognizing that 15,000 will not be committed or needed?
At this time.
At this time.
I'll make a motion that, in regards to the 15,000 in capital improvement sales tax funds that were previously committed in the last meeting to the Rural Economic Action Plan grant application.
That won't be needed?
Correct.
At this time.
At this time.
Way to go, that was a tough one.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
He did not run with that.
Yeah, I noticed, thank you for that.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn, I'm sorry, Jason.
Yes.
I apologize.
Create your habit.
Are you ready, Jean?
Yes.
Okay. Number 15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 13-2022, a resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund.
Staff would recommend approval of this resolution, which is needed to officially apply for the grant for a standby generator for well 7, AKA the Ampride well and the Sonic well. Two generators, two wells.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 13-2022, authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund.
A second.
Here's my girl right there.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Item number 14. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve expense to Diamond Autobody to repair a police vehicle, VIN number star 9639, in an amount not to exceed $16,475, utilizing insurance settlement funds.
So this was a, police officer was in a pursuit of another vehicle, went south of town, struck a deer, and it activated the airbags, all of them except for the one directly in front of him. And the insurance totaled the vehicle and said they would pay us $16,475 if we kept the vehicle. So I talked to Diamond Autobody, who has previously done bodywork for us, for the city, for the PD, and they gave us a preliminary quote of $11,934.73. I recommend that we keep the amount in the motion not to exceed $16,475, because often with a preliminary estimate, they'll get in there and there'll be something else spent, and I don't want to have to wait. You know, just let them do the work. But this would, fixing this wrecked car will help us, because we are not having any luck getting new cars. I'm still waiting on a new car from last year, and I'm waiting on a new car from this year. So this would get it back on the road the quickest.
That's safe.
Safe, yeah. And the vehicle would be just fine. It will only have liability insurance on it, so if it's wrecked again, it's done. But we have another vehicle like that in the fleet as well. We're having to get creative, because you can't get vehicles. They're just not making fleet vehicles.
Well, I, I make a motion that we approve the expense to Diamond Autobody to repair the police vehicle in, in an amount not to exceed $16,475, using insurance settlement funds.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the purchase order 2210027, in the amount of $16,475 to Diamond Autobody for repair of police vehicle, as stated above.
We're the government, so we like to do everything twice. So this, this allows us to actually do what you just told us we could do.
Well, this allows you to have an OPO on it, correct?
And pay it, pay the bill.
You don't have to keep coming back and forth.
Yeah.
That's it.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order number 2210027, in the amount of $16,475 to Diamond Autobody to repair the police vehicle, as stated in number 14.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Item number 16. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint one or two members of the City Commission to the Activate Perkins Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan Update from the University of Oklahoma.
So this is a, I've written about this a little bit, but this, the University of Oklahoma Planning Department has graduate students. There's probably 20 of them in this program, and they have offered, well, they didn't offer, we wrote a grant proposal. We is Amy Peterman and Sarah Gold did some, and Melinda Caldwell from TSET, Fortlater TSET, wrote a grant proposal, and it was awarded, so this will allow, this, this has these OU students and faculty coming in to update our comprehensive plan, which is what our zoning is based on, and it's kind of a roadmap of where we want to go. We currently have a comprehensive plan through 2025, which is rapidly approaching. This would jump us up to like a comprehensive plan to 2040. So part of this, a big part of this process is having a steering committee of people that can meet, not regu-, I mean, not like weekly or anything, but can meet outside of the confines of these meetings and discuss things. We kind of, when we wrote the grant proposal, it was kind of geared towards walkability, safe travels to school and back, and sidewalks, and things of that nature, so they, they've kind of coined it Activate Perkins, and it'll be a-
Which goes along with so many different goals and things we'd like to-
That are going on right now. Yeah, so the timing is perfect, and they're, they're, they have been here already once. I've met with them via Zoom, and I met with them in person, and the kids are jumping out there, getting a whole bunch of information together. It's gonna be really, I mean, this, this is a, you could pay
Six figures.
Easy six figures to have this done by a consultant. So this is a big, and then the steering committee with people on it from the commission, we'll be able to follow it through to adoption, and then, you know, we'll use it for years to come. So we'd like to have one or two people, however the commission would like to do it, on the steering committee for input.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Mayor?
It's weird.
Yeah, one person can represent more than one.
Yes, hold on, it's, um, there was, you know, you still could have one or three commissioners.
Right, that's why. But they're gonna represent both. Yeah, one person can represent both, that's all.
If you just have one person, let's get two people more.
I mean, that could both, everybody up there's on PIDA.
Yeah, but you may want to, everybody up there's on PIDA.
Okay. Well, that's completely separate from this, and how to designate one there. You can have, that's a suggestion.
It's just a suggestion, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Was this how it has to be, or is it a suggestion?
No, it's a suggestion.
That's all I wanted to know.
So, we don't have on the PPWA agenda for you to designate someone for this committee. We can do it that way.
Well, you can appoint somebody, can't we?
Or, how do we, what's the question? Well, you, it'd have to be on the agenda for your meeting tonight before you could appoint someone as the designated representative of the PPWA. But, how did that, how do we word that? So, yeah, at this point, you can appoint one or two members of the City Commission, and they would be City Commission representatives. If you decide to do two, you can do that. If you decide to do one tonight and let, and somebody wants to wait and be a PIDA representative or a PPWA representative, we can do it that way. It probably doesn't matter a whole lot.
If you're gonna do two, I would recommend doing two, so we don't get held out of meetings.
So we don't get what?
So, we have the people on the board, instead of, if we have a meeting between now and the next City Commission meeting, or PIDA, or PPWA meeting.
We have somebody from this body that is present.
I'm-
You could, you could even, go ahead and do two people.
Well, I would like to-
And then you could actually, if you wanted to, put it on a PIDA agenda if Renee wants to be on it. It would be good.
I have an idea for a PIDA person, but I would like to appoint Commissioner Rebelo to be a part of this. I'm just kind of, it's, I'm more at the discussion part.
You have two, so is anybody else interested?
Well, Autumn's not here.
Do you want me to do it? Should we row shampoo?
It doesn't matter to me.
Do what?
He's brand new.
He's pretty.
I'm drinking from a fire hose right now, come on now.
Did he want to? I, I would be happy to be a part of this, and I have the schedule flexibility as long as it's after work or on the weekends, so.
See, I put your name down.
Don't mind.
I make a motion that the City Commission appoints Commissioner Sarah Rebelo and Commissioner Justin Henninger to be a part of the Activate Perkins Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan Update with the University of Oklahoma.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
My pleasure.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
17, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Staff? Agenda item 18. I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting of the City Commission.
A second.
Number 11. She's quick, man. Slow down with my words.
Thanks for letting me have access.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Don't go anywhere, Commissioner Cox.
We get to do it again.
We get to do it again. I made that mistake the first night.
She got up and walked out.
Did you go running?
She came back the next day.
We do a PPW first? Yeah, oh wait, I got two, nevermind, my bad.
That's not working.
Two comes. Okay, I'm ready, Jean. You gotta call a meeting? Oh, call an order, please. It sounded like I've done this before. Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Consideration and action- Consideration and action on consent agenda A through E. Anyone have any comments or reports or want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Number four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda.
New business.
I'm good. Number five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase of a used vehicle for public works in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
I don't know that this will actually happen because I think finding something suitable for public works in that price range is becoming more and more difficult. In any event, we'd like to have it approved in case we do find something. Along the lines of police cars, fleet trucks, Ford is opening up the order for like three days, sometime in November for fleet. So I've been talking to Vance and Guthrie, where we file a lot of vehicles on state contract, and I'm getting a quote now for a new one, but we have to be ready on whatever this date is in November when they open it up to pull the trigger, so I'll have an agenda item. But if, if we don't do something with this twenty-five thousand, I'll potentially have an agenda item next month because the order's supposed to be later in the month for a new one. I just don't have the quote yet. So this would allow us, um, James is here, that, uh, I'll introduce him in the next agenda item, but at the wastewater plant, he's, he needs to drive instead of walk. So, he's not walking. Well, sort of. Have a company truck that'll game around.
Sorry, my, my burbles were just all over.
So this is one avenue that we're trying, that we're researching. We just haven't had any luck. But I'd like approval, so if we do find something in that range, that we could move forward.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order of a used vehicle for public works in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand at, at this time.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Number six, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have not been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda.
James is here tonight. I could not have reasonably foreseen he was gonna be here. So he is our new wastewater plant operator. He's an A operator. Please stand up. We're very happy to have him and his expertise and qualifications.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It's just a.
Looking forward to working with everybody.
Totally.
He's kind of been drinking from a fire hose. This is his second week.
I'm empathizing.
Thank you. I empathize.
Come and help me. I got, I got a space, so.
Just keep treading water. That's what they tell you.
Just keep swimming.
Well, we're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
When you drive by my house, make sure you wait. No, seriously, they are due.
See? Who knows where you live?
Somebody may have pointed it out.
It's not staying on, stay it on.
Point out all the politicians.
We are. We are. Okay, our, our goal is to have, uh, a lot more, uh, fun at our meetings.
Must be my fault.
Do we? There's nothing to, um, say for item agenda number six, is there? It's just, just a report.
Oh, yeah, no.
Uh, I make a motion that we adjourn the public, the Perkins Public Works Authority meeting, regular meeting, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second. Have a great night, guys.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Hungry.
Yes.
I'm hungry. Make a Mexican gas roll. You just layer it.
Probably will be the, the shortest meeting.